Welcome to the Policy Section of the Phoenix City Council. We will call today's meeting to order and begin with a roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Here, here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Thank you for joining us. We'll begin with Councilmember requests for information and updates. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. So I just wanted to take, take a moment to report that I mentioned a few things. In District 5, we're going to have a very busy Saturday this week. Three important events happening. First, we would be out, first, we're going to be out at 19 North. We're going to be doing a neighborhood cleanup with the Brophy High School students. It's something that's been done every year. We were hoping that it was the beginning of fall, but it might be a little hot when we're out there on Saturday. But very excited to be able to do that in a safe way with the volunteers, with the leadership at 19 North. So that's very exciting. The second thing that we're going to be doing is having a free food bank. It's going to be happening from 8:00 AM to noon at the American Fields, the Boers Fields on 51st Avenue and Indian School. The free food bank is part of the Salvation Army's operation, Feed the Need. So thank you to Salvation Army for stepping up in these difficult times. And finally, we'll be hosting the mobile COVID-19 testing van at the Maryville Community Center from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. These have been very successful in our, in our district. And we are encouraging everyone who needs to please take advantage of this free service. And I also want to thank the Mayor, Mayor Gallego for joining me this morning in a great event with Penner Gass Elementary School District. Thanks to the support of the City Council, we were able to provide the Penner Gass Superintendent, Dr. DeBlu, with the personnel protective equipment they need to keep their teachers and staff and students safe. It was very exciting. I think everyone was blown away by the masks, that you'll finally be able, we're going to be able to help a lot of different children, you know, that have, you know, that go through real challenges every day. So I'm very excited of being able to do that and been part of this, been part of this great day with our superintendent, with the mayor, and with everyone else that was there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. A great event, great work by our procurement folks, Finance Force, Youth and Education, Convention Center, you name it, stepping up for our students. Any additional Councilmember updates? Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to have a couple of questions for staff. Couple of months ago, we asked for a report on what happened with the protest incident in the Garfield neighborhood. I'd still really appreciate us being able to have that report. And alongside with that, we weren't able to have a Public Safety Subcommittee this, this month. So I'm asking here if we can get an update on how the protests have been going, specifically how we're deciding to disperse resources. It seems like a lot of resources, a lot of officers have been on the streets. And there's also been some arrests made, in particular arrests made either, or what we're hearing is officers going to people's homes or pulling them over, targeting them after a protest is over. And so I just wanted to see if there was a point either in the future or at the next policy meeting where we could get an update on the protesting. Thank you.
Before we start the next item, I want to say thank you to Phoenix employees, especially our COVID-19 response team led by Assistant City Manager Milton DeHoney. That team worked all summer and continued to innovate, to deliver services that are beyond what we normally do as a city. We had city employees get involved with testing, with procurement of safety equipment for schools. And the team did a great job executing innovative ideas smoothly and efficiently. So thank you. Every employee has stepped up and served our residents no matter the circumstances. And for a lot of employees, that meant a significant change to their daily lives. I got to visit the Heat Respite Center and meet with parks employees who had thought they were signing up for a summer of aquatics and instead are now serving people experiencing homelessness. And some of the individuals who are being served at the Heat Respite Center had just the nicest things to say about our city employees and what they had done to support them. It was, it was really a neat conversation for me to be part of and good to see the pride in, in the people we were serving. So we should also recognize that unlike some of our peer cities, we have not had any layoffs during COVID-19 and have stepped up to serve our community in new and important ways. Today, we will hear a report on all our response team has accomplished this summer. Before we do, I want to say one more time that the City of Phoenix has such a great dedicated workforce. We are very fortunate. And I will turn it over to the man who leads that workforce, our City Manager, Ed Zirker. Thank you for all your work in this area.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to the council. It has now been almost exactly 180 days of COVID pandemic work. It's hard to believe. That's half a year, six months of time. In some ways, it's gone very fast. In other ways, it feels like an eternity to all of us. I want to thank you and the council for the work you did in April, May, June, and July to set up the Coronavirus Relief Fund Strategic Plan. The time the council put into that early is now paying off in a clear direction for staff to be able to implement that direction about testing, providing resources for the community, mortgage and rent and utility assistance, food, PPE, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, PPE for schools. All those came as a result of the clear direction that the council gave in the strategic plan. Thank you also, Mayor, for recognizing Assistant City Manager DeHoney. He has been charged with leading the city staff team in addressing the pandemic from implementing the direction of the council. And Milton has done a great job. The staff has responded. And so Milton DeHoney is here today to give a report on the multitude of efforts that have gone in this summer. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Assistant City Manager for that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We're pulling our presentation up and we'll get started in just a second. While that's occurring, I want to say that we have been very busy this summer. We have followed the direction that you've laid out. And actually, we're going to be presenting our summer activities in a two-phased approach. Today, I will be talking about a myriad of activities that the staff has carried out over the course of the summer. I'll be talking in terms of quantities of, of projects and deliverables. In two weeks, Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton will be here. And he will be talking about our COVID response in terms of quantifiable measures, how much money we have spent, what buckets the money has come from, how we are accounting for the money that we are spending to make sure that it's consistent with the federal guidelines that we've been given. The overall financial charge is to spend our money by December 31. And while we've heard about conversations of extending that, to date, December 31 is what we're operating under. And that's why we're trying to get everything expended by that point. So with that, I will be glad to move into our presentation for today. As Ed mentioned, the charge that we gave our team was to execute the direction that the mayor and council has laid out for responding to the pandemic. We have some 26 different departments that have provided several staff, staff in the thousands in times to work on different elements of our COVID-19 response. And one of the key things about this is the staff has not worked in a silo fashion. We have worked as a team. We may establish a focus team for a particular topic. Or we may establish a team that focuses on a particular project. And that cuts across multiple departments so that we stay coordinated. Our summer focus, you take all of the information that we have to provide and try to figure out a cohesive manner to present it today. And so we're going to walk through certain areas of activity that we have carried out over the summer, starting with nurturing children, stabilizing families, supporting vulnerable populations, supporting economic recovery, slowing the spread, blending efforts, and reimagining service delivery. So there's a number of activities under each one of these categories. And now I will walk through those for you. So in talking about nurturing children, that includes our Kids Cafe, our tablet distribution, the youth camps, supporting Head Start, PPE in schools, as the Vice Mayor and Mayor alluded to earlier. So starting with our Kids Cafe, that's been operated by our library staff. We provided 13,000 meals and 1,000 activity kits for families. And keep in mind, as I go through this, I am just talking about activity that's happened this summer, not from the beginning of COVID, just over the last few months. In terms of tablet distribution, that's, we've distributed 711 tablets to children residing in public housing. There have been different departments that have worked on that project as well. We've operated youth camps in multiple locations, a cooperation or collaboration between parks, human services, and housing. We have served 556 kids through the youth camps. And some of the activity within the camps relates to assignments and school-related measures that some of the students have been doing over the summer and going into the fall. In terms of supporting Head Start, we've conducted over 1,100 virtual socialization sessions for some 235 families. So here is the significance of adapting to your environment. According to Head Start rules, these socialization sessions are supposed to take place in the home. But because of COVID, the staff hasn't been able to go into the home. And so they developed an alternative way to deliver the required activity. And so they've been doing it virtually. And the purpose is to work with parents to help get their kids ready for starting into the beginning of their long educational process. PPE for schools, as was talked about earlier. We took a portion of the Convention Center and turned it into a warehouse for schools. We procured 1.3 million pieces of PPE, including the mask with the clear window, as the Vice Mayor was talking about earlier. That is important for hearing impaired children to be able to see a person's lips move. And that's why you have the clear mask or clear window at the bottom for some of the masks that we purchased. So we developed a schools team that was led by Tim Valencia and John Chan. We worked with some 29 school districts, including 300 schools. We set up the warehouse area that you just saw. We established a distribution plan for the PPE that has been purchased. We have purchased 1.1 million masks, 1,500 gallons of hand sanitizer, and 38,000 isolation gowns. We then transitioned from focusing on nurturing children to activities that serve to stabilize families. That includes emergency food assistance, the curbside service, the utility rent and mortgage assistance, the use of our trails, and the use of our golf courses. So under emergency food assistance, there's a couple of efforts along this line. Our Office of Environmental Programs partnering with LISC had a project where they were focusing on locally grown food with the intent of benefiting farms, caterers, food hubs, and nonprofits. This was consistent with the erection received from the council earlier in the pandemic. And so what we have done in this effort, farm to restaurant and then to social service organizations over the summer, cutting it off on August 28th for purposes of this report, we have helped 10 farms, eight mobile markets, and some 46 restaurants. Additionally, in cooperation with the St. Mary's Food Pantry, the housing staff has distributed over 2,200 meals and food boxes for families in need. Months ago, as you will recall, we shut down our library branches due to COVID. But our client base, our customer base, was eager to find a way to still be able to access some of the services that the library provides. And again, under your direction, we set up Kurt's Curbside Service. So just during the summer, we have served over 92,000 customers. And we have over 914,000 library materials that have been checked out. And in the picture in the upper right of the screen, you see evidence of the huge book drop. Not real sure what the point of that big pile is, but kids like it. So we're, we're doing that as another way to serve our clients. Utility rent and mortgage assistance. Thus far, we've committed nearly $5.5 million. We've served over 1,400 households, working through Wildfire and the other participating agencies that you approved before the summer break. In the recreational area, and these stats really show that people have looked for ways to stay active, looked for ways to get out of the house and do things. Usage of our trails up 363%, some 372,000 persons. Usage of our golf courses up 68% in July and 58% in August. So when you look at all of these activities together, these are things that we undertook to help stabilize families. And in addition, we have offered virtual recreation for all ages, including seniors, to give them opportunities to try to stay active even if they were at home. We then transitioned to supporting vulnerable populations. That includes our Day Respite Relief, providing water, serving meals to homebound, calls to check in on seniors, and refugee and asylum support. Starting first with our Day Respite Center, this is the, the operation that we've been running at Convention Center. We have served some 19,000 people, averaging about 204 people a day. In partnership with St. Vincent de Paul, we provided over 31,000 meals. This operation should be winding down in the next handful of weeks. But it is, again, an adaptive reuse of a city facility to respond to the needs of the community at a time when they needed us most. We provided over 101,000 bottles of water. This has been, well, every summer I've been here, it's been hot. But this has been atypical in terms of the level of heat that we have dealt with. And so we have tried to be responsive, recognizing the need for people to stay hydrated. In terms of our homebound and seniors, we provided over 65,000 meals to them over the course of the summer. And we've made 17,000 calls to check on seniors just to make sure that they were doing okay, working in concert with our Department of Human Services. Our refugee and asylum support, working through neighborhoods, through Wildfire, through our associated agencies. We've helped 111 households in terms of utility rent and mortgage assistance. We have executed agreements with Wildfire, as indicated. We've also assisted the refugee community in terms of micro business assistance with $5,000 grants. And we provided $1 million to nonprofits that have a focus of working with refugees and asylees. We then transitioned to supporting economic recovery. So we've done a couple of rounds of small business relief grants. We've awarded 674 micro business grants. We, 18 awards for small business airport concessionaire grants. And keep in mind, Mr. Barton will be here in two weeks with all of the numbers associated with the awards that I'm referring to. And we've done 121 awards to small businesses in terms of relief grants. We did a round two of small business relief grants. And in the second round, there were 175 awards for small businesses, 103 awards for restaurant restart resiliency grants, recognizing that they really have struggled through the pandemic. In fact, unfortunately, as you see, not only in our city, but across the country, a number of restaurants have not made it. But we've done what we can to try to support the restaurant community here in Phoenix. And then we step towards slowing the spread. And to the mayor's point at the outset, this is an area that we don't do. This is not our bread and butter. It's not a level of activity that we typically are involved in. But again, because our community has needed us to be engaged, we have. And so we started with employee testing. Over the summer, we've tested over 4,400 employees with the PCR test. That's the nasal swab test with a 12% positive return. There's also been the antibody test. And a little over 1,200 employees have taken that with 4% of them positive. During the course of implementing this particular activity, we opened it up for household members. And over the summer, we've tested over 1,400 household members of city employees. There have been 38 enterprise messages sent out regarding COVID, be it about testing or a wide variety of items. The significance of this, we've heard from the employee base throughout the pandemic. They feel that it benefits them and they're very interested to get constant information about what is going on. And so the 38 enterprise messages is meant to keep our workforce abreast of the variety of activities that we're doing, how we're doing it, and information about our city employees. There has also been 75 meetings with labor that HR has conducted with participation from the city manager's office to keep our later leaders, labor leaders, aware of our COVID-19 activities. This is something that we really haven't talked about, but I think the pictures give you a glimpse of what's involved. So the fire department has transported over 2,200 individuals over the course of the summer that are suffering from COVID-related illness. And so what the pictures show you is how our firefighters have to layer up, if you will, in order to go in to provide medical service to one of our residents. And it also shows you the steps that they have to take after each individual transport to clean the ambulance, to get it ready to go back out and respond to another call. And they have done that over 2,200 times this summer. This shows you moving away from the employee focus, talking about the fire response activity, to our community testing that we've been doing for several months. This slide shows you the different clinical partners that we've been involved in. There is an additional clinical partner or two that's still in the works. They haven't done any testing for us yet, and that's why they don't appear on this slide. But a few weeks from now, this slide will expand. So over the course of the summer, our team has been involved in 64 different testing events. We have been in every single council district. We've tested 26,818 people. And that is from the end of May through August 31st. Additionally, the mobile testing van, which was launched on the 18th of August. In Week 1, they tested 1,050 people. And so this is with our partnership with Vincere Cancer Center. We worked through some of our growing pains initially. But it's obvious this is a very popular modality for providing tests. In Week 2, again, another 1,000-plus people. And so we're averaging some 200 tests per day when it goes out. We have developed the schedule for the remainder of September for the testing van. Wednesdays is a day that the van typically does not go out, but they are out every other day of the week. And then we move to blending efforts. So these are activities that have been going on in addition to our addressing COVID-19, but do require some response and coordination with the COVID team. So first, census. As you're aware, we're dealing with a shortened time span. Census activity as of right now is supposed to curtail at the end of September. Convention Center voting, mask enforcement, addressing domestic violence, and monsoon preparation are all elements of our blending efforts category. So here you see the census van out at the same time, at the same location, as the mobile testing van. So where we can pair them up, we do blend the effort together to allow us to address COVID, but also to encourage census participation. It's an idea that we got very early on from Councilmember Noakowski. And we take the van out with the testing van if we have permission of the property owner. We have to secure that first. And then again, adaptive reuse. We do not typically use Convention Center for polling places. But this summer, we did. This is an example of a polling location at Convention Center set up in a manner to ensure social distancing would be observed when people came to vote. It went very well, from everything that we've heard. And so again, it's using what we have to adapt to what the community needs. We also were dealing with mask enforcement. We lead with education. We responded to some 260 complaint calls that we got regarding public gathering. We also responded to 224 mask violations, and that is through August 31. There were no arrests made, and we issued less than five citations over the course of the entire summer. And again, trying to encourage people to follow what the CDC guidelines and the state of Arizona guidelines are. And then we come to domestic violence. We've talked about this in previous policy meetings. We saw an increase as a result of the pandemic. And so under your direction, we provided financial support to Chicanos Por La Casa, Dove's Shelter Without Walls, and the Sojourner Center. And the money that we provided to them was for the following activities, doing some infrastructure improvements to their facilities and acquiring additional COVID-related supplies, and also ensuring that their facilities underwent a series of deep cleaning. And so the cleaning and the PPE procurement has taken place. They have bids out on the infrastructure-related items. So the faucets and toilets and automatic doors, those activities will be taken care of in short order. But they are, in fact, in process. And then aside from help to external partners, you will recall, we devised a work team around domestic violence internally, led by Judge Taylor and the court system. We have some 15 program participants around the city. We have some 15 program participants around the city. We've developed an agreement with them. And so as a reminder, the purpose of this is to have a computer in different locations around the city, so that if you are a victim of domestic violence, you need to seek an emergency order of protection. Rather than having to come all the way downtown, you could go into a place closer to where you live, where you'd be able to immediately access a judge online, go through a hearing procedure, and obtain the emergency order of protection that you need. Our team has developed a training program in concert with the Family Advocacy Center. They are expecting hardware any day with everyone teleworking and everyone doing distance learning. The demand for laptops and tablets has soared, and so that has impacted our ability to get them in. We did expect them by the end of August. And so any day when the court takes ownership of those, we can move on with that project. And then as we normally do, we go through all of our preparations for monsoon, and that's been a no-show. So we've hoped and prayed and did whatever we could for big rain. We've gotten little rain, and we still had to prepare just as if we were going to be flooding. So mayor and council just know that when the big one comes, we're ready for it. And then we transition into reimagining service delivery. So this focuses more on what we have had to do internally in order to adapt to the pandemic, be able to serve our clients during the pandemic. And we've taken a number of steps with your support in order to make that happen. So there's quick facts, there's teleworking, there's new technology, there's Wi-Fi, and there's city facilities, and of course, PPE. In the quick facts area, we have dealt with and are still dealing with some 47 different COVID-related executive orders and 98 COVID-19-related contracts or agreements, which has occupied a lot of the law department's time. In terms of teleworking, you encouraged us as a city organization to telework as much as we could. Over the course of the summer, we were able to acquire over 1,100 more laptops, as you see being delivered. And then in terms of new technology, and this is a really telling slide. So just in the last 30 days, this government has been involved in over 6,100 WebEx meetings. I would venture to say seven or eight months ago, we would have struggled just to do a handful. And now it has become the way that we work. That has involved more than 36,000 participants, and we know this because you have to sign in every time you go into a WebEx. We have Adobe tech, Adobe software through the city clerk's office for contract routing. The significance of this, it prevents the need for a whole bunch of hands to touch the same contracts moving through departments, which is contrary or inconsistent with COVID protocols. So with being able to affix signatures and sign-offs electronically, we're able to reduce the need to handle the paper. Our Phoenix 311 system has been up and running and responsive to people during the pandemic. And then Wi-Fi, this has been necessary to support the tablet and distance learning programs, such as what the housing department has done. So what we found out, that in some areas, for the tablets to actually work, they needed more access to Wi-Fi. And so you see our employees up on buildings or rooftops to put up Wi-Fi. It also is a factor in addressing the digital divide, which is something that our community and others deals with. And so this is very important, a small thing that can make a very big difference. And then city facilities, we have put up 490-plus Plexiglas stations at 26 different locations, 1,400 hand sanitizing stations, 1,000 touchless light switches to again, cut down on the need for multiple people touching the same switch. And then mask, mask, and more mask. You'll remember in the front of this, we were struggling to get masks. At some level, we were getting deals that were just shy of extortion. So we have solved that problem. We now have acquired PPE. We're ready for several months if we should have another wave of it. You also see the equipment that's housed at FIRE that's used to re-clean masks. And so that not only serves the fire department and city, but it's really to serve jurisdictions throughout the entire valley. And so earlier, not earlier today, but earlier, we've talked about reopening a time or two. And one of the executive orders that we had to address dealt with special events, putting the onus on municipalities to deal with special event permitting. And so we have been using consultative services from a, some public health professionals to help us in dealing with special events. And we're also trying to broaden that, to get them to help us with the reopening issue. In your last meeting, you made reference to cleaning of restrooms within the parks. And I'd like to invite Tracy Hall and Inger Erickson to come to the table to give you an update on where the bathroom cleaning item stands.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. As Milton indicated, I'm here to provide follow-up information regarding the reopening of athletic fields, in particular, the cleaning of the restrooms. At the meeting last week, the direction was to reopen our fields for allocations and reservations and to open the accompanying restrooms. The Parks Department was also given direction to look into cleaning the restrooms more than once a day. Prior to the outbreak of COVID, restrooms were cleaned one time per day while open to the public. Upon reopening our fields, we will clean and disinfect all restrooms using enhanced protocols one time per day with our staff, with our employees, City of Phoenix employees. However, increasing our frequency in flatland parks will require the work to be done through a janitorial contractor. As the CDC states, clean, disinfect restrooms daily or more often if possible. And so for this reason, we're looking into a janitorial contract for 86 restrooms, which are accompanying the athletic fields. Based on our preliminary and informal cost estimates, we believe the cost will be approximately $750,000 for additional one day, one time additional cleaning, on top of what our staff will do for cleaning up until the end of the calendar year. This expense could be funded through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And so I can answer any further questions pertaining to that.
So with that, Mayor, members of council, this slide on the screen ends where we started: the work of 26-plus departments over the course of the summer to serve the community during a pandemic. We have been pleased to do it, and our team is ready if you have any questions of us.
Wonderful, thank you. A busy summer full of innovation. It was wonderful to see some of those numbers about just how many people we reached and how many even WebEx's we had, and fabulous to see some of the, we have cute kids in the City of Phoenix. Thank you all for your hard work in very difficult times during a pandemic to serve our city. We will go first to the Vice Mayor.
So I, so I'll start with Milton. How much money, do we, do we still have any money that's not, that's unallocated for
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of councils, my understanding that we do, we were going to do, or we are going to do a more comprehensive report in two weeks with Mr. Barton that would give you more details about our financial status as it relates to COVID dollars.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, on that note, the unallocated portion of the community services allocation is, still remains at the $6 million number that the council had left unallocated.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, I mean, I would also like to see, when you come with a report in two weeks, I would also like Chris Mackey to also come in with a report of how many people we've actually helped with the small business loans. And because I know we still have a lot of small businesses that are struggling, so I would like to see, you know, a report from her, like what else does she actually need for the small businesses? How other ways can we be helpful to the small businesses? I know that we have, you know, some in District 5 that I, you know, that I'm hoping that we'd be able to help. Or do we know how much money is still left over from that, from the small businesses, from the small business loans that we were doing?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm, I don't have that number with me. Director Mackey is here, and we're going to invite her to the table. Perhaps she can respond to your question.
Sorry, Chris, for putting you on the spot like that.
Oh, no worries, Vice Mayor. Happy, happy to do that. Mayor, Vice Mayor, give me just one moment to look at the most recent numbers as of last week. So give me just a second. We were of the original, give me just a second here, there we are. As we look at our small business, so the council was very generous in the funding that you did provide to our small businesses. So we've been working diligently to get that money out in the market. So I'll go through each individual program so that you're aware of where we're at with each. If we look at our Small Business Assistance Program, council gave us $5 million for those businesses, and those are businesses that are 25 or less in employees, and they are in a qualified census tract. To date, we've spent just under $2 million from that program. So we still have, not knowing, we funded again last week, so that on Friday afternoon, but right around, right around $3 million is still left in that program. On our Restaurant Restart, council provided $1 million, and we have expended all of that funding, and that program is closed. On our Airport Small Business Assistance Program, council authorized a million dollars, and we have expended the million dollars, so that program is closed. On our micro, our micro program, council graciously and generously gave us $6 million. We have expended 4.4 million of that funding to date. So there's approximately 1.5 million or just under that. We fund again, we funded again late Friday afternoon, so just under that. So about $3 million on small business and 1.5 million on micro.
Chris, then my question to you is, is, I mean, I know that there's always a need, but do we have people that have filled out applications that we're a little nervous that we might not be able to help? Or do we need to promote it more to be able to give out the rest of the money? Like, where, what's your sense on that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so a couple of different things. You'll recall at your most recent council meeting, you did authorize us to change the requirements for our, all of our grant programs. When we'd originally come to you, we required that the business needed to be in place beginning January 1st of 2019. We were to you originally in March and April, and so that showed that business had been in business for a full year. You generously approved at your last council meeting to move that to, they have to be in business for a year. So we were able to go back out to businesses we'd had to decline that started business in January, February, March, all the way through August of this year. So we are going back to those businesses that were formed in January through August of 2019. So now they've been in business for one full year. So I think that's going to capture, we thought that would capture 100 or more businesses that we had to decline on that front. On the Small Business Assistance Program, that program is for, only for qualified census tracts, where our micro program is for citywide. So I think, I think a couple of things at council's direction. We could look at the small business program since we have more than 50% of our funding left and perhaps open it up to citywide. Maybe council would choose to look back at restaurants, you know, at additional restaurants since we've already closed out that funding. Our micro program is very successful. We've struggled a little bit to get into some communities and ensure to them that we weren't, you know, a telecaller that calls you, a robo caller that is trying to give you money, but there's a hook that's going to come back and get you. So we've worked with so many community leaders to try to ensure confidence with our program. So I think we always could use help on that front, ensuring to the community that, that we are interested in helping them and making sure that their best interest is brought forward and that there are no gotchas, if you will, to our program.
Okay, well, that would be great. I mean, we obviously like, would love to be able to work with you to see how do we get to some of these micro businesses. I know that we have people that just are a little overwhelmed about, not that they don't trust, but they're just overwhelmed about the idea on how they would get started. I know that Emmanuel here at our office helped Victor over at Tiza Honduras to making sure that he got that money. So I'm sure there's just a lot of people like that. So whatever we can do to be helpful, like, we would, we would want to be able to do that.
Vice Mayor, thank you very much. We'll make sure that we reach out and think of any things that the council offices can do to be helpful.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. And then my other question was for Tracy, around the bathrooms at the parks?
She's coming back.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Tracy, so I understand, you know, following CDC guidelines, I know that it's important that we clean out our bathrooms more than once a day. But, you know, we've asked the water department to can, put together a list of the different jobs that we could stop subcontracting out. So I'm not very excited about us getting a company that would come in and clean the bathrooms. And I get it that we need to start with that because we just need to get that done in the next week. And I get it that it's impossible to hire 30 people. I mean, how many people do you need? I guess that's my first question, then, how many people do you need to clean those bathrooms?
Vice Mayor, we have looked in terms of our staffing, our current staffing levels, and we do not have the current staff to accommodate an additional cleaning per day. In terms of numbers, I would have to actually come back to you with that. But we have evaluated, and we have talked with the union and some of the staff that understand that we do not have the staffing levels, that if we were to increase cleaning, if this was, if that was the will of the council, that we would have to go out at least initially for a janitorial contract to assist us.
And that's fine for right now, but I do want to see those numbers on how many additional people we need to hire. Because you know that a lot of these subcontracting companies are not going to provide health insurance for these workers. These are the most vulnerable workers that we're going to have out there, and that might catch COVID. So what's going to happen to those people if they do catch the virus and they're not being provided with healthcare, which is typically not something, you know, that subcontractors actually provide for folks. So it's fine if we need to start with that, but I do think that we need to look at these workers in a serious way. And I don't, I mean, there's a lot of people that are out of work right now. I seriously doubt that we'll have a hard time hiring people for the, for the long term. I mean, this is something that we're going to have to do for a very long time. So I do want us to put together a plan. Sure, we can start with this, with this agency. So I, I do want us to put together a plan. Sure, we can start with, with this, with this agency, but we do need to hire these people to be in-house. I mean, we've been, we've been pushing now for the last, me for the last year, Councilwoman Pastor for the last, I don't know how many years, that we want to make sure we stop subcontracting out the work of this, of the city and that we keep it in-house. So I would like to see a plan as well on how we're going to start hiring, how we're going to make that happen and by when we can actually get that done.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Milton and all the staff and, and all the great work that's been done over the summer. One of the programs that I want to highlight was something that came together through Phoenix TV. And I want to thank Deborah and Debrania for doing amazing work. They partnered with the Roosevelt and the Osborne School Districts to provide lessons for the entire summer. Monday through Friday, they were on TV providing lessons to the youth and it's, and it's one of the great programs that happened. And I think we, obviously we put in the cost, but it didn't, and then cost us more. And I just wanted to give them a shout out for a great program. It ended last month. Because workers have been doing so great, one of the early conversations we had was figuring out some support for City of Phoenix employees. So I wanted to hear if there's an update or an ability that we have to support our workers, specifically ones that their partner, someone they're living with, or some, something in their family or someone was, wasn't hurt or, or got, got, got the COVID, whatever, lost their job, that we were able to support those workers. I also wanted to hear from, from you, Milton, is what was the biggest, what, what's the biggest need that's still out there? What was the most successful program or where is it that there's still more need that you would advise or that we could look into maybe supporting even more? Also had a question around, do we still have a December 31st deadline? Is that still set by the federal government? I know we had heard rumors of, of maybe them expanding that. So I have a couple more questions on the field, but just wanted to, for, for Milton, what's been the biggest need? Is there something that we can create, some sort of fund for the workers to support them? And that's the city workers. And then is the deadline still December 31st? And then I wanted to come back to Tracy.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Garcia. Let me answer your questions, not necessarily in the order that you posed them. So yes, December 31 is still the deadline that we have for having to expend all of the COVID dollars. There have been various conversations at the congressional level about perhaps extending that 90 days into 2021. That has not yet been made official. And with count, with Congress still struggling on the next pandemic-related relief package, I don't know if it'll get resolved or not. So we are telling our team, we have to spend all of these funds by New Year's Eve, period. And if that changes, then we'll move from there. In terms of our ability to support city employees and their families, you may recall that initially, we were only providing testing opportunities for city employees. We then expanded that to providing testing for family members. And there is in fact, a fund that has been established to provide support for city employees. I am aware Deputy City Manager Tony Macaron is who leads that effort, but I'm aware we have provided support for some of the families who have lost a family member who worked here. And we have supported them with funeral cost support and other things. COVID-19 Hope Fund for Employees to date has served 23 families. In terms of where the biggest need is, Councilmember Garcia, I would really like to give that a little bit of thought before I just sort of shoot from the hip and tell you something. I can tell you what concerns us because we have talked about it in our COVID-19 meetings. We're providing levels of service to the community that essentially is going to abruptly come to a halt on a date certain, December 31. So people that have become, I don't want to say dependent, but they have become reliant upon Kids Cafe food assistance that we've been providing. We've been providing assistance for utilities and rent. We've been doing testing to ensure that we know where the spread is. It's hard to isolate, you know, one need over the rest, but we will certainly look at that. But the point I'm trying to make to you is, when you get to the end of the year, all the things that we've been doing will just stop. And I don't know what will happen after that. But we're going to do everything we can all the way up until the last minute that we have money to do it.
Thank you. I appreciate that and, and I think it's right that we should think through what, what exactly is needed. I, I ask that because I know we, it seems like a lot, but compared to what we've spent, the 6 million that are left over are minimal compared to what we've been able to do. And I know the federal government just ruled on evictions, so it kind of gave us some relief there. But I'm still worried that that's something that's going to hit our city pretty hard.
Councilmember, Councilmember on that point, the Support Fund for Employees has expended $88,000 to date. So that's 88,700 is how much money we've spent thus far.
Right. Back to, to the field conversation, and I know Tracy, you're, you're just putting it out there. It's not a decision that we're gonna, or we're not making a decision today, it seems, or it's not a, a given that we're going to contract and clean the restrooms. And it's, it's one of the concerns I had last week. And I'm still kind of upset that we made a decision to open something up based on county numbers, knowing that some of our communities, predominantly the South Side, the West Side, the poor, the black, brown communities have hotspots in it. And so as we consider moving forward, I would at least, at the bare minimum, ask that if we can make a decision today on cleaning the restrooms more often or having extra resources, to please consider having them in our communities that have the hotspots. I believe again, our decision yes, last week was premature. We still don't have medical expertise as we're making these decisions or whether to clean the restrooms once or twice, but we're, we're moving forward with it. Seven of you decided that it was okay to move forward and, and I, and we need to respect that. But what I'm asking now is if there is some funds that are left over and if we are having to make decisions of where to spend those funds, to please think of our communities that have been hit the hardest and that continue to suffer in these hotspots. So we are going to make a decision today. And if we can make the 760, and, and I agree with, with the Vice Mayor that we should look to contract, but I also don't want to, knowing that we're putting people at risk, want to just put them at risk with, without us doing everything we can to keep them safe. And so I guess, last question is, one, how long would it take you to contract those folks? Two, where are you at on reopening and how comfortable do you feel opening next, well, less than a week now, in a couple of days? And then three, do you need anything from us to, to feel safer? And with that question, I think this one would, would be to add, where are we with being able to, to get some experts on board to at least consult us to make sure that we're making the right decisions?
Mayor, Councilmembers, one I'd like to reiterate that we are only talking about opening the 86 restrooms associated with athletic fields. So we would not be opening nor doing additional cleaning at all those restrooms because they would not be open. So out of those 86, again, we are looking to contract. We have consulted with three janitorial contracts and we still have to receive formal quotes. And we, we, we have received the 750,000 for the end of December, which was when the Coronavirus Relief Fund, to our knowledge, ends. That was based off an informal quote. So we'd still need to get a formal quote and then we'd have to do an amendment to a contract. So we are estimating anywhere from two to four weeks before implementation. And in terms of how comfortable we are in opening up our fields, our staff are prepared to open up the fields as we have been advised to do so. So we do have the staffing levels to open up the fields and allow individuals to play. And we're comfortable with our plan and that would be as of this Thursday. Yes.
And again, thank you, Tracy. I know it was a tall task to ask you to do this in a week. And, and for all the park folks and yourself, thank you for working hard. Wish we would have gave you more time, but hopefully we, everything goes well. And, and, and just know that the decision's on us, not you. And I, we know that you are trying your best with the decisions we are making. So thank you.
Councilman Garcia, on the last question you had about consultants, so we have been dealing with COVID-19 recovery consulting. They have been helping us in terms of looking at special events. We have asked them to expand the scope of their work to give advice on reopening decisions. They are willing to do that. And where the, the current status is, they have been checking with their insurance providers on giving a different type of advice, how it might affect their insurance premium. They do want to do it, but as we negotiate on what the additional costs would be, they have to know what their cost is in order for us to settle. So we think we're fairly close on reaching an agreement and the way that we have talked about it. So I'll just make us, make this up just for explanation purposes. So let's say a department is thinking about reopening like the library system. The library department would devise a plan for reopening and the steps that they would purport to take in order to make it safe based upon CDC or whatever other industry authority they would look to. We would then have a conversation with our consultants and walk them through the steps that the library is reporting to take and then get their advice as public health advisors on what they think about our report. We would then be able to present a more cohesive picture to council that here is how we would propose to go about reopening the libraries. Here is the public health advice we have received and then yield to whatever policy decision that you choose to make.
Thank you.
Councilman Noakowski? I'm sorry, Councilmember Garcia.
No, I just wanted to thank them and, and I really hope we could get that done by the time we're making more decisions like, like what we did last week. So thank you, Milton.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. And once again, thank you for our staff, for all the wonderful work that they've done and my colleagues for all these great programs. But going back to the, to the bathrooms, is Tracy still there?
Mayor, Councilmember, I'm here.
All righty. Hey Tracy, so how many parks do we have with restrooms right now?
Councilmember, are you asking for all parks or just the parks with athletic fields?
All parks, yeah.
All parks. So we have 96 flatland parks with 107 restrooms.
And then who, who actually was maintaining those before, before we closed the restrooms?
Our staff, our maintenance staff were cleaning those restrooms one time per day.
And is there any way to have them take over the 86, 86 from the 107 that we have? Kind of double up on that?
They would be currently cleaning them at a higher level, but they do not, we do not have the staffing capability to have them come back and clean twice. What we're proposing is that we would, they would clean the restrooms in the morning during their shifts and then we would lock and close the restrooms and reopen them when we had a reservation or an allocation. So the restrooms would be clean as of the morning and then we would have the company come in that evening to, to clean at another time.
And do we have any restrooms open now in our parks, our flatlands?
No.
I just went to a restroom this morning about 5:45 at Piesta Peak, went hiking after I dropped off my son at 5:30 football practice. So I'm just wondering who's cleaning those restrooms and why are those restrooms open? And the other restrooms and locations where, where individuals also hike, like South Mountain and all that, aren't open?
Mayor, Councilmember, when we closed amenities, we did not close trails. And so the restrooms next to the trails or, or at the trailheads were, remained open. Those are cleaned through a janitorial contract. Most of those are cleaned through a janitorial contract or with some of our staff. And that contract has been in existence for a while now.
So which trail at South Mountain has a restroom open?
So the, any restroom at the trailheads should be open. If it was not open, certainly let me know, but then all, all restrooms at the trailheads should be open.
All right. And I, I'm in favor with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Garcia that we should look in-house first before outsourcing. We've been hearing over and over from all the different union representatives that it's so easy for the city to outsource instead of looking inwards, right? So I like to, I like to see what the, the union's representative has to say about cleaning the restrooms and the maintenance part of it. Maybe you can have a report for us next meeting so we can make sure that we checked all the dots and, and crossed all the Ts, right? Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody in the midst of it. We're not used to being fast, I would call it, our fasted for years COVID-19. And I really appreciate all the work that is happening. I would like to go back to a conversation that we had with City Manager Zucker and some of his reports in these, in these pieces. And I had heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I had heard that there were some staff members that needed to be retooled in their area because where their job requirements, it wasn't like they could telework or work from home. And where I'm going with this, Tracy, Tracy, I would like to know how many part-time people we have in our after-school programs?
I will come, Mayor, Councilmember, I will come back with you with the exact number you're talking about of our PAC staff?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to know how many, roundabout approximately a number of how many people we hire during the school year, part-time, to do PAC?
And Mayor, Councilmember, in pre-COVID, we would estimate around 150 employees, part-time employees for PAC. That certainly would be different potentially this year based on spacing and numbers when students return.
Okay, so currently, how many PAC members do we have hired?
Mayor, Councilmember, I'd have to come back with you with that exact number. Some, you know, there's a natural attrition rate. And then in addition, during the coronavirus pandemic, there are some individual staff that have elected not to work at this time.
So, okay, I get that. So there is a possibility to be able to hire some part-time staff. To, I, I would assume there, there are people out there looking for part-time work, especially right now if they're out of work. of work, to do some of the maintenance that is needed in the parks. And there's a process and an ability to do that.
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, all of the part-time employees, the recreation employees as you're referencing, if they were looking for work during this pandemic, we have found work for them, whether it be in maintenance, some of them are working in other departments, servicing in other areas. So where there has been work available and they have chosen to work, we have found places for them to work. If, obviously, this is, this would be an assignment outside of their normal job duties, so they would have to elect and be willing to do this work.
Okay, so then we also have the ability, since the park is already set up, to have the ability to hire part-time workers. We have the ability to hire part-time workers and write that scope.
Mayor, Councilmember, are you asking if we had the ability to hire additional maintenance, part-time staff to assist with the cleaning for this, for the additional?
Yeah, because COVID, yeah, because COVID dollars allow you to hire temporary staff in a part-time basis. It's temporary and temporary to do these positions or the scope of work. So we have the ability through COVID, I don't know if Jeff is in there, but he could provide us with the legal, but I know we have some ability under COVID to do this.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is Inger Erickson, Deputy City Manager. While Jeff is coming to the table, one of the things I would mention is that we could look at what HR would allow us to do with the positions that we have, and we could come back with that information, too. But Jeff is here now, too.
Mayor, Members of the Council, good afternoon. Councilwoman Pester, to your question, yes, you can use coronavirus relief fund dollars to augment and supplement staff as long as it's over and above what you had already budgeted for. What we've got to be very careful of with the coronavirus relief funds is that we do not supplant. We cannot supplant our existing budget. So that is something that we have to be very mindful of and we have to look at. And so I think the approach here is that we would have to document and illustrate that we're cleaning at a frequency above and beyond what we've budgeted for. And so that's either with a contractor or be it with city staff. Either one of those would be eligible and allowable under the CRF funding.
So we have the ability to do it, then?
That was correct.
Thank you. So I think this is for Ed. I don't know if it's where it goes, but, or Chris, does there need to be a directive? Or how does this work?
Councilwoman Pester, you're referring to how we're going to clean the restrooms, the staffing level?
Yeah, I'm referring, I'm referring to not how you're going to clean the restrooms, I think we know how. Who is going to have the ability to clean those restrooms versus a contractor versus us writing a scope of work and hiring part-time people?
Certainly, what I'm hearing from the councilmembers who are speaking is that your desire is for us to find a way to use city employees to do the extra cleaning. So we'll do a quick analysis of that cost, and we'll bring that back to the council with the comparison, and then the council can make that decision.
How much, but how quickly can you turn that over in the sense of we're opening up by Thursday?
Yeah. Well, we aren't going to be able to get the cleaning going already as fast as Thursday, regardless. So we'll do the, we'll do the work that we can do, and then we have a council meeting next week, and we will bring information back on that council agenda.
So am I hearing we're opening up on Thursday, but we're not going to be, we're not, we're just only going to clean once a day, starting Thursday, until we figure it out?
That is correct.
And now, never mind. Thank you.
So on that, yeah, on that point, I think what we know is that if we were going to clean more than once a day, and we wanted to do that as fast as possible, the fastest way to do that is to do it through a contractor, because they would be able to just insert their existing infrastructure into what we've got. We will use our staff to the greatest extent that we can. They've pulled all the, they'll pull all the part-time staff that we have that are looking for work and need work and that they have available to clean as often as we can, but to ramp up to a regular schedule will take us a little longer. But we can do that analysis very quickly, the difference between the contract and doing it with our own staff.
And if we could also talk to some of the employees who might be impacted by that, particularly those who would be doing a different type of work, just to see the level of interest, that would also be helpful. I don't think anyone proposed this, but I would have concerns about hiring new city employees who would then not have a job come January, and so we would just have to communicate pretty clearly and understand what that would mean. I'm not sure that anyone proposed that, but people, I think, are looking for jobs that last beyond a few months, ideally. Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, I would hope that this amount of money would shift the conversation. We just saw the amazing work that was done throughout the summer, and that amount of money, again, I didn't vote for it, it's up to you all who voted for it, but I would want you all to reconsider if the best use of that money is for folks to be able to play sports, or is the best use somewhere else, whether it's the distance learning, the digital divide, homelessness, whatever else, and all the great work that we've done. And so, I just, again, it seems that this information, we could have had it, we would have planned this out and had some time, but we don't have it. And now we're looking at opening in two days, and then to me, it also doesn't seem right to do a knee jerk and spend three-quarters or half a million dollars to open up fields. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm just putting it out there again, it's up to you all who voted for it, but it doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor. I guess Councilman DeCiccio, I think, has not had a chance to speak yet, so we'll go Councilman DeCiccio and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So why couldn't we just, on a temporary basis, until you do your evaluation, just start the cleaning, Ed? I mean, you can do that right now, could you not?
Councilman DeCiccio, are you referring to just start the cleaning of the restrooms?
Right, just start those, do that with the temporary. And then when and if we decide to go for a staff, I don't care, I just want the bathrooms cleaned, you know, for my, it didn't matter as much to me right now, to get into whether we should have employees or non-employees or anything else, I think we just need to get them cleaned. I don't know how much of those are really responsible for any transmission of COVID, but at the end of the day, it's great to have these kids be able to use clean bathrooms. So we could move on that today, move forward on that, and then come back with your analysis of whether or not we want to use that, because it's going to take us time to ramp up, correct? I mean, we just can't hire twenty-five, fifty people overnight. It doesn't work like that.
That's correct.
You have a ramp-up period in any organization.
That's correct.
So why not just go ahead and just use the temporary? And until we're able to move forward, we can't, I mean, we don't want to get involved in a situation where we're debating, should they or should they not be employees while people are waiting for bathrooms to be cleaned. We just want to be able to get them cleaned, and then at the same time, basically do a dual path here, where we make that decision and then ramp up and then do that, you know, moving forward.
Yes, Councilman, so it's important to note that our standard of care of our restrooms is normally one cleaning per day. In talking to Ms. Hall and Ms. Erickson, we are not aware of any other city around us that is doing more than one per day now. Our aspiration was to clean more regularly, clean more than once a day, and it's going to take us a little bit to get our staffing up to that level. I'll turn to Inger or Tracy to add to that.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that is correct. We are cleaning at once per day. We can look at overtime efforts to see if we could compensate, but noting that we're talking about eighty-six restrooms across the city of Phoenix, that could be a challenge, which is why we were looking to ramp up with the use of a janitorial contract.
Right, and then as we debate whether they should be employed or not, we just make that decision that, you know, next week or the week after, what we don't want to do is slow things down. The other part of it, I think Councilman Garcia made a really good point, the focus needs to be heavily on those hotspot areas. They just do. I mean, if we believe that bathrooms are, you know, one of the areas of transmission, which I'm not sold that they are, but if people believe that, then we ought to be focused on those areas. Is there a way to focus on those hotspots?
Mayor, Councilman, we can, we would certainly clean those restrooms, again, if we had the staffing or overtime ability or with the contractual janitorial contractor to clean. If advised, we could clean twice in addition to what we were currently doing, as we're currently proposing once, but we could focus on those restrooms that were open in those hotspot areas, but we would do so, we would clean additionally with all of the restrooms.
Just so you know, I would be favorable to that. If that's going to make people feel better, more secure, then I would be favorable to cleaning them twice a day in those hotspot areas.
Any additional questions, Councilmember DeCiccio?
Not on my end, Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just turn to another subject right now and ask Milton, what has he been hearing from the public with regards to some of our other facilities that are closed, like our libraries, our senior centers? Is he seeing, or the departments, have they seen a lot of requests to reopen, and how would you reopen? And I know that in Scottsdale, they have reopened their libraries, they have very, maybe once every other day or something like that, but they've started trying to provide some of the services that their constituents like and need. I'm just curious, I know we've gotten quite a few emails, particularly on the libraries. So has there been discussion, Milton? Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Stark, we've had discussions about it within our COVID realm, if you will. I don't know how many people have asked about reopening. The way that it has evolved, you go back to when we closed all the branches. So initially, we were providing very limited service because everything was closed. We were trying to get our arms around where we were. And as things moved forward, in the library case, for example, we found multiple ways to continue to provide service even though we were closed. And so the curbside, the kids' cafe, the activity kits for kids, the online programming has not stopped, and so people are still doing those things. And so we've been able to serve in an alternative way. And I think the staff has effectively communicated to their public that we're following the guidelines, we're under executive orders, the public, our clients have understood that. Now that we're advancing to where society in general is starting to reopen, then people are asking. But one of the things I need to add, Councilmember Stark, some of the changes that we've made, people want to see stay in place. We couldn't go back to operating the way we were before COVID with large congregating furniture that a whole bunch of people were sitting on, you know, not having spaced out. It would be a different kind of environment, but there is interest. And Mr. Barton now oversees the libraries. I don't know if you have additional or different thoughts, Jeff?
Mayor, Members of the Council, yes, we've actually been having these discussions, Rita Hamilton and myself, about what opening the library looks like. And so when we come back to you mid-October, we're going to be giving you an update on summer programs, specifically the fine program as well as curbside, but we'll also probably start having some conversations with you about a phased reopening, because again, to Milton's point, we've got large areas in the library where we don't want people congregating on top of one another without proper social distancing. The other thing, looking at areas like the meeting rooms, will probably be the last thing that we open. And then looking at possibly like the computers, having a reservation system in place so that folks could reserve computers, and you can make sure that you've got ample space in between people using the libraries. And so those are some of the things that we're looking at, and we'll be having that discussion with you. I also, you know, I have the benefit of living with a librarian, my wife is a librarian for the county, so I kind of also know what they're doing with their libraries as well.
Thank you. And Mayor, just one other thing. You know, I know, especially for our seniors, they're really missing their senior centers. And so if we can get and drill down a little bit more on how we're helping our seniors, I would appreciate it. I know, Milton, you gave a great overview today, but I just wonder what the input is from human services as to what's happening in our senior centers. So if we could get some detailed information on that in the future. I know it's hard, especially for seniors, they feel isolated, and I know our human services has been working extremely hard to make sure people feel that they're still a part of their center, even if they're not going, but any other additional information, I would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We do have one member of the public to address the council. Are there any additional councilmember comments before we go to the public? All right, and we will open up the phones. So I think we have one member of the public wishing to address the council, and that's Ayutriya?
Yes, hello.
Hello, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. So I'm a student reporter for the Walter Cronkite School, and I joined this meeting specifically because of the whole athletic fields opening issue, and I had some questions about it. I was wondering if this would be the place to ask that? I know that the fields around Phoenix bring in a huge amount of revenue, we're like somewhere in the millions, I read, and it does make me happy to see the fields reopening. I was just wondering, instead of like with the whole process of cleaning the bathrooms, if cases spike up again in July, how are we going to handle them? Are we going to clean or close the fields again? And I was just wondering, how will that look like?
Tracy, would one of our parks' public information officers be able to follow up with the questions?
Mayor, yes, we'll have, we'll have either Stephanie or the parks' PIO get with a caller.
Reporter?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to our staff for this report. I think we'll continue to have a good discussion on COVID-19 and city services at our next policy session, and I think it'd be wonderful if Chris Mackey could bring forward some ideas about how we make sure we get the business assistance out to the community, which could include expanding the timeframe in which people can apply, noting, of course, that they have to be, the dollars have to be expended this calendar year, but perhaps adding an additional month or so, or any of the ideas we've discussed about expanding the program and its eligibility. With that, we will close the policy session of the Phoenix City Council and move to work study. For our city manager or staff, do we need a break in between?
Yes, short, but yes.
Mayor, we could take five minutes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you all. So we will reconvene in a work study in approximately five minutes. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you for joining us for the September 8th work study session of the Phoenix City Council. Work studies allow the council to take a deeper dive on the issue and have an in-depth conversation about an issue. No action is taken at work study sessions. Today's session will focus on the Office of Accountability and Transparency, including coming up with a process leading to the hiring of leadership for that office. This is one of the many things the City of Phoenix is doing around policing and community safety, including de-escalation training, banning chokeholds, additional training, community involvement, behavioral health training, early intervention system, and other enhancements, working in the right direction towards having the strongest department possible. There will be no action at this meeting, but we, so we will not be hearing public comment on this issue. The ordinance will come forward to the city council at a later date, but we hope to come up with a final process for community engagement. We're here to gather information. I encourage all of you who are watching to get in touch with your councilmembers and our office if you have additional thoughts or ideas. Councilmembers have been working quite hard on engagement around this issue and are continuing to do so. I also want to thank our Assistant City Manager Milton Dehony, who just spent several hours presenting to the council and is back again. We are grateful for his continued service on these important issues, and I will turn it over to Mr. Dehony.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So it's been a while since we've had a conversation about the Office of Accountability and Transparency, our OAT, as it is referred to. So I want to take a few minutes just to provide some context to make sure we're level when we start to have the conversation. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce Julie Crey from our Law Department, who is going to be part of the presentation. And we also have brought back Mary O'Grady, who has served as outside counsel to us on this topic for legal and charter and statutory-related items. So they are seated at the table with me.
Can you advance the slide, please?
We're having battery issues, it looks like. Maybe it's...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So in talking about OAT, it's a place that's independent of the police department, where use of force or other critical incidents can be reviewed with the parallel investigation by the police. It's a place for residents to go if they want to file a complaint against a Phoenix police officer or give a commendation. The office, theory, would have the authority to investigate complaints and make recommendations about policy, training, or discipline to the chief. These are all elements that we have discussed previously when talking about this model. It also would have resources for community outreach and engagement. Actions that have been taken to date. So we have studied a variety of models over the course of last summer. We've gathered information from multiple cities around the country that have one model or another. We hosted visits by both the Chief Operating Officer from NACO, as well as staff and members of their civilian oversight board from Denver, Colorado. As the mayor indicated, we've had various discussions in both policy and our work study sessions. There's been legislative action taken to date, $3 million for the first year's budget. But the budget allocation is not what actually legally creates the office. It takes an ordinance in order to do that. And we'd like to start the discussion or get further into it by talking about the draft ordinance that we have worked on over the course of the summer. And so the draft ordinance that you have is not meant to be a final product. It is consistent with things that were either a part of the presentation on the night that the model was chosen, or other direction we have received from council prior. So to walk you through the draft ordinance, I'll turn it over to Julie Crey, our team member from the Law Department.
So as Milton said, the ordinance needs to be passed before a director can be hired. This ordinance that we are proposing only covers the Office of Accountability and Transparency. As a reminder, the city charter gives the power and oversight of employees to the city manager. The scope of a hybrid civilian oversight model was discussed with council several months ago, and this table was approved by council with four basic areas. One was involving complaints, allowing that the OAT office would intake community complaints, that they would actively monitor and participate in PSB investigations and provide independent reports with disciplinary recommendations directly to the police chief. It also provided as a policy monitor to review and recommend policy changes to the chief with input from the CRB, the civilian review board, and report to the community with regular issues with their own reports and input of the CRB. It also involves some community outreach, implementing community outreach programs and support services to impacted community members. So we'll go over a brief outline of the draft ordinance. The ordinance was drafted starting using the Denver Office of Independent Monitor City Code. However, several revisions were made to adapt the ordinance to Arizona law and for the City of Phoenix structure, city code, and city charter. The draft ordinance establishes the Director of the OAT, who serves under the city manager. It also provides for the director to hire staff directly, but is restricting staff from having been a current or former employment connection to the Phoenix Police Department. The director will create procedures and training for its staff. The draft ordinance also establishes the role of a staff attorney, which will report to the director, not to the city attorney. And it allows the OAT office to seek outside counsel when necessary. It also establishes the oversight powers of the director to monitor and participate in incidents involving use of force, discrimination, retaliation, and discourtesy. The draft ordinance provides the OAT with discretion to monitor professional standards, bureaus, investigations, and gives the director the ability to recommend additional investigation. It also establishes the public reporting expectation of the director's office, which will provide annual reports with trends and recommendations and other reports as needed. The ordinance requires confidentiality and the cooperation of the Phoenix Police Department. It also establishes the role of the director in the disciplinary process, providing the director with the opportunity to comment and make recommendations regarding discipline and related policies. It gives the director the right to access police records. It also establishes a prohibition with penalties for retaliation that applies to both citizens and employees. In summary, the OAT will take community complaints, conduct outreach with the community, support services to impacted community members, make recommendations regarding administrative action, make recommendation regarding policy issues, assist with mediation to resolve disputes, administer a youth outreach program, and address other issues of concern to the community. And those two outlined in red are just additions to the red line ordinance. Finally, staff seeks council direction on the scope of the OAT ordinance.
Mayor, we're going to pause the presentation here for discussion on the draft ordinance.
Wonderful, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two questions. The first one, on page nine, so where it says, provides the OAT with discretion to monitor professional standards bureau, on page five, on investigations, it says that it participates. And so what we pass does not translate to what's on the ordinance. So we could change monitor to participate. That's one. And then on page seven, it says restricts staff from having a current or former employment connection to the Phoenix Police Department. I believe the Denver ordinance, and I'm not sure, but because, kind of the, one of the main reasons we want to establish this independent investigation is we don't want community feeling like police is investigating themselves, I think it would be important to add there any other police department or agency so that we can get away from the thought that it's just police investigating themselves. Those are the two things I caught.
Councilman, could I ask a question just for clarification?
Yes.
I want to make sure I understood your last point. Is it that no staff would, could have ever worked for any police agency anywhere? Is that what your point is?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm trying to pull up Denver's, do you have it? So Denver says, neither the monitor nor any employee of the monitor's office shall have formerly been employees of Denver police, sheriffs, or fire departments. I don't see why fire departments would apply here, but I would suggest that we say any police or sheriffs or law enforcement agency. But I don't have a problem with fire departments, so.
Mayor, is it okay to have discussion as we go along, or?
I think that that makes sense. I guess if no other councilmembers have comments, I did have two. There are, there's a section called mandatory oversight by the director, and then a following section called discretionary oversight by the director. And so the mandatory appears to be things that director will always be involved in, and then discretionary begins, the director have, shall have discretion to monitor any internal police department investigation of any civilian complaint, including, and then it lists a variety of things such as use of force and discourtesy. In the mandatory section, it says that the director shall actively monitor and participate in PSB investigations of an allegation brought by a resident against a sworn officer. I would love that the department director have some discretion. One of the things I took from Denver early on when they said they were doing everything was that it got to be quite a backlog, and that the director preferred to have the discretion to pick the investigations that were of greatest priority to the director's office and the Community Relations Board. So I just want to make sure we're preserving some discretion so that the director can decide what he or she believes is the top priorities. Mayor. And then the second one I wanted to flag was the definition of police chief. And this says any police department, universal, uniformed person. And I think we might want to a definition of police chief that is just the police chief or police chief in command staff.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastore.
What page are you on? I'm looking at the ordinance.
So it's section... From page four is mandatory oversight by the director, and then it goes into page five is discretionary oversight.
Okay, got it.
It's just, my sense is that the council, the members who are interested in the OAT wanted a director to have some discretion. And so if there was a need to focus more on use of force than rudeness, that the discretion would be available to say we're going to focus on.
Okay.
Or if it needed to be rudeness, then it could be rudeness. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so looking at this, another thing that I believe it would be important to ensure the Officer of Accountability and Transparency provides protections for our uniformed officers who would like to report incidents of unjust or inappropriate policing. Can we make sure provisions are included in the ordinance to protect the uniformed officers?
Mayor and council, yes, we can take a look. There are some protections already in section 20-26 for retaliation. But we can take a closer look and make sure that there are also other protections for whistleblowers.
And then my, and then my second question was, as well as producing an annual report, I get that, that that's something that we're going to be doing. The OAT director is charged with publishing status reports available to the public. Our hope has been to ensure that the OAT, that the OAT does not strictly look backwards in this approach. To get a better place, we're going to need to be more proactive as our policing methods evolve. The OAT report can help this council use data to move forward with policy. I would like to ensure that the OAT reports are published quarterly so that important trends and data can be acted on by the council when making policy decisions. The annual report should serve as our yearly goal-setting report, but it is, but the quarterly report would be incredibly important, you know, to making sure if there's any actions that we, that we need to take. I would hate for us to go a whole year and not understanding what's working, what's not working, if there's anything that we need to adjust. And then the year, like I said, and then having the yearly report, looking at that to being able to set benchmarks or setting up goals for the following year. Is that something that we can also implement, a quarterly report?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, yes, we can add in section 20-8, paragraph C. If it's the will of council, we can add in that the director shall publish a quarterly status report.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my, I would be interested in knowing what other offices and other communities do and how often they report. I would think early on, while the department is getting established, that quarterly may be difficult while they're still hiring staff and working on getting data and monitoring in place. But I think we can learn from what other departments have done in that area. I also think it's worth making sure that the OAT has the ability to take commendations, and if they find best practices, including things that, for example, one precinct is doing well, they have the ability to help bring that forward for our entire department to model. We want to elevate success stories. Councilwoman Noakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, under the director staff, we heard from Councilmember Garcia regarding never been employed by the City of Phoenix and other law enforcement. So I just was wondering, how do you get that experience of law enforcement if you're going to be that director? So I got, I kind of have that question, that you had to work with some type of police department or had some kind of training or some kind of experience to have an experience with the police department. The other thing is that next section, number D, it says that the director will appoint one or more attorneys to advise and represent the director one or more attorneys to advise and represent the director with respects to Oat provided, right? So I think the same thing should apply in D as it is in C, that you're asking that they never worked for the City of Phoenix Police Department. So I think what we need to do there is say that they never, that attorney has never had a case against the City of Phoenix Police Department or the City of Phoenix. I would like to add that into number D, if possible.
Do, any other comments, Councilman Noakowski?
You know, the other thing too is that under the Director's Staff, I mean, appointment and qualifications and removal of office. Ed, can you describe to me a situation where it would justify the city managers terminating the director without going to the civilian review board? And that's right there in section 20-4, number B.
Sure, Mayor. Councilman Noakowski, I would imagine that would be extremely rare, but perhaps if there were some immediate imminent action that were, you know, if not illegal and moral, where an immediate decision needed to be taken on the spot, that is extraordinarily rare. But I think it's just reserving that eventuality where there, there may not be a chance to get to the board for a week or two, depending on when it is and how it's structured, but certainly that would be extremely rare. And a good city manager would certainly consult at a minimum with the board chair, even in the case of an immediate situation, just as a good city manager consults with the city council in an immediate situation.
All right, thank you. Just wanted clarification on that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, city manager.
Thank you.
I just, at one point, I think we need to go back and maybe explore a little deeper the issue of, the Councilmember Garcia brought up about a City of Phoenix Police Department versus any police department at all. I think that probably needs a little more conversation, but we'll, we'll just put a bookmark in that and, and be ready to talk after Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Section 20-7A, it says the director shall have the discretion to monitor. I also want to put and participate any internal police department investigation.
That was hot out there, man.
It is hot south. Phoenix is hot.
Yeah, it's warm out there.
Do we need any discussion or just put that, you'll put that there?
Yes, Mayor and council, we can add that. In some sections, we have monitor and participate, and in some sections, we took out participate such as in 2010 and 2011, just for concerns that we might have with the disciplinary process in regards to the charter provisions. But we can take a closer look and make sure we are consistent throughout, except where we might have those charter concerns.
Okay. What, is there a concern on this one? A charter concern, or you can just tell me later? It's just for consistency.
Correct. We will take a look at that and we will get back to council if there's areas where we do have concern with adding participation.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that we don't exclude attorneys. I, I think there's a lot of attorneys, judges, and folks out there that have brought suits either to the city or so on that, that we should, hopefully we don't disqualify them. And I also want to ask the process question. I know we're giving suggestions and if no one says anything, like it seems to be moving forward. So that's why I'm, I'm putting kind of a, you know, holding that and, and making sure we don't do that. The other question is, is back to what are those charter concerns when it comes to monitor or, or to monitor versus participate?
Mayor and council, the charter gives the authority to the city manager and his designee for personnel decisions, and I will also ask our outside counsel, Mary O'Grady, if she wants to interject any additional comments.
I, I don't think I have any more. I think it's mostly a consistency thing. We do have concerns about when the, if they, they get involved with disciplinary matters that are under the city manager's chain and the police chief's chain of responsibility.
Seeing no additional council members, I think we are ready to move on to the next slides.
Mayor, actually, if we could just talk just, for just a second more about where people are on the issue of no Phoenix police experience versus any, any police experience anywhere in the country. I didn't hear that there was a total agreement on that, and I also think there's some more consideration we ought to think about with that.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have some hesitation on no fire police. I think it's important that we have people who have been involved in the process, not necessarily in Phoenix, but in Arizona. I think it's logical to allow them. I mean, I'm sure when stack the committee with them, but I think it would be important to have knowledge on what norm, what's the practice, and some reason behind it. Because many times on the surface we see these things occurring, you think, oh no, how could that happen? And then you find out what the whole policy and the practice has been forever, and you understand why they took certain actions. I think it's important that people can understand that it's on this committee. I also have another question besides this. Did I ask now?
Please.
Okay. I, I didn't see anything in here that says during the investigation or completion of an investigation that they can go to the press in any way, then it has to follow, you have to have a flow chart, and one has to occur before it's made public, so that we're not getting media attention in our inappropriate places or that could make an error somewhere and really detrimentally impact the life, the family's lives. So could we have something added in there about when these investigations should be made public?
Mayor and council, thank you. Yes, section 20-9 does discuss confidentiality, but you are correct. What that discusses is that the director shall, or their members of the board, shall not discuss the status of any criminal investigation. We can look at other language and look at expanding that provision.
Council, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that PSV is staying as is, and the current process allows police to review. And so I think our goal with this program is to have accountability and transparency and build community trust. In order to do that, one of the things that Denver suggested to us was to make sure that this process did not have an officer involved in it. We heard it, the independence piece, and we've heard from community groups that they would feel more comfortable if there wasn't a, a police or former police or family member of police on this committee. And just reminding everyone, our current process stays intact. This essentially will accompany it and, and be a part of it, but we still have police expertise and obviously our chief, who will review this. And so it's not as if no long, police will no longer look any of this, at any of this, but we're actually moving forward with an independent, hopefully community-driven process that, that gives us that opportunity to build trust with, with folks. And so that's, again, one of my, my last pitch of, of why it's important in order to have community trust, to make sure that no officers or former officers sit as staff or as director of this board or of this department.
Mayor, could I respond to that?
Councilwoman Williams.
Councilman, the reason I'm doing that is because I have talked to retired chiefs and commanders who absolutely agree with this policy. They're very familiar with both sides of the issue, and I just think they'd be an asset to you. That's all, thank you.
So, Mayor, I, I think there was a question to us at some point about process. So what staff would do is take all of the input that we're getting from council today and go and look at the language to see what modifications needs to be made to address your input. And then we would simply put out a second draft that you all would see to see if your comfort level is that we have addressed the issues that you've given us. That, that would be the process for going forward, is to issue a second draft that has updates in it and see how close we come to, you know, something that you're ready to consider legislatively.
Mayor. Well, when you do that, could you create a flow chart? I'm not sure I understand how this gets started and what process it goes through. Well, could you do that as well?
Yes, yes. I can, I can say today, to Councilman Garcia's prior point, which relates to the question that you're asking, the process that the Professional Standards Bureau follows for investigating a complaint, which is something I presented to you all at some point in the past, the, the process essentially remains the same. What this would do is look for the opportunities for the Oat staff and director to join in the process, so they would be part of interviews, they would be part of reviewing things, and they would be in a position to say, because we were there and because we saw it and participated, that it was in fact a fair and objective investigation. That's the goal of, of what your outcome would be. But yes, like, we can bring out the flow chart, so to speak, and show that at a future meeting.
Councilwoman DeCicio.
The other thing too, and this is a fault to Councilman Noakowski, and you always want to make sure that this is an objective individual there. And I think I heard this, but I wasn't quite sure if you're going to be adding to it, the fact that you don't want to hire attorneys that have had cases against the City of Phoenix or, in particular, the City of Phoenix Police Department.
Mayor and council, yes, we did have that suggestion to add that in to 20-5, paragraph D.
Yeah, you just want to be careful of bias.
Mayor, may I say something? Because Ed asked the direct question.
Councilwoman Murray.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I don't think it's a, just exclude police officers. I, I understand the point Councilman Garcia is making, but I, I just think, you know, some of the comments about expertise are also well-founded and that to just say no police officer need ever, a former police officer or a police officer worked across the country or police officer might left the force with completely different views than when they started, should apply. I, I don't think that's appropriate, and I don't think that should be included. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Can we look at section 20.6A, criminal investigation? Is there a reason why the director doesn't participate or why it goes to the county?
Mayor and council, are you referring to the director not participating in criminal investigations?
Uh huh, yes.
And, yes, I believe that is, we don't have the, that's not within our area, is to participate in the criminal investigations.
Okay, and then it goes, okay, I'm just going to follow. It goes to the county. Will the director be given any updates throughout the process or, we don't know, it's new.
Mayor and council, I don't believe, it's certainly not contemplated in this ordinance. I don't think the process right now that there is any interaction between the county unless this, the Phoenix Police Department is actively involved also in the case, but I would defer if someone has other information on that.
So Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, that, that is in fact correct. The pathway forward in a criminal investigation would culminate in the police department communicating to the county attorney's office for their jurisdiction to determine if criminal charges will be brought forward. The pathway for the Oat director is to impact administrative change or disciplinary impacts that would rest with the chief, so they would not be involved and as a matter of practice would not be consulted about a criminal investigation that ultimately will wind up in the county attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Noakowski.
So following up with Councilmember Pastor, I think it was section 20-12, the director's access, access to records and other items. The question would be if, if the police chief turns over the investigation to another police agency or the county attorney, would there be a second investigation by Oat's office or not?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Noakowski, there, there could be on the administrative side. So you could have an incident occur, and so one pathway is to determine if the actions of the officer were in violation of the law, criminal matter. And so regardless of the outcome of how that's determined, the department would still need to determine administratively, was the actions of the officer outside of policy thereby subjecting them to the disciplinary process? The Oat director would be involved in that administrative investigation, or they could be, and up to and including the way it's currently in the ordinance, they could make a recommendation to the chief on what they think the disciplinary outcome should be for that action.
So just a follow-up on that. So in that same section, the records, are the records going to be turned over or redacted to Oat's?
From a practical matter as to how that would happen, where they would view them, those are the kind of things that the director would need to come on board and start interacting with police, and they would work out a procedure or a protocol that makes sense. But the legal part is to drive home that the director does have a right uh to the records, and if, you know, there's some reason why he or she couldn't see them, PD would have to identify what that reason is.
So, that concerns, because it's not a clear picture, and I think if we're gonna have people's records and being open and not open, we should have a clear picture, a clear um path on what that director has authority over and what are the rights of our employees. So I think that that's something we have to work out.
Correct. Mayor.
Councilman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, in following up on that, you always want to make sure you have language in there that protects the due process rights of any employee, correct? I mean, is that in there? I didn't see that.
Mayor and council, the due process rights of the employees are in the Arizona statutes for the Officer Bill of Rights, so we what we wanted to do is make sure that we didn't put anything in here that would conflict with that, but where it's silent, then uh Arizona statutes would govern.
Got it, all right, that makes sense. The other two is, believe it or not, I do understand you want to avoid any type of bias, and that's why, you know, individuals don't want to have the police officers in there, I get it, but at the same time, you got to make sure that there's no bias in there either, so anybody that's been involved in any type of activist role against the police or pushing an agenda should also be precluded if you want to have a truly unbiased office.
I am trying to look through job descriptions.
So without that type of language in there, well, without that type of language in there, or those types of protections, those types of, basically, you call them firewalls, then you open up a major door here. Uh, so if you don't want anybody on what you would call either side of an argument to be able to get into an organization, you can always find unbiased individuals out there, you just got to make sure that they don't come from one side or the other, they don't have a perceived bias coming in, and that's what activists generally have, because that's also the concern that people have with police officers. So likewise, you don't want to have that in, that mix in there if you want a truly unbiased organization. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
Just to Councilman DeCecio's point, and with that frame of thought, then PSB should be dissolved, and we should include other folks that are non-officers within that. And so, what we're, what you're, what you're suggesting here is, for example, civil rights leaders like Daniel Ortega, who has for a long time followed this issue, and in the nineties, and and knows about the cases and knows about the PSB process, someone like Daniel Ortega, and I'm not suggesting him, but I'm saying, using him as an example of someone that has kind of led the efforts against police reform since I was in college, um, knows the system, and and to suggest that he somehow would be impartial because he seek justice in a court of law against an officer does not make sense to me. Um, and and so, again, I want to remind folks that PSB stays intact. This is meant for community trust, and if you actually, because attorneys move on from different firms, move on from different places, um, it would be, yeah, I just don't think it would be right to 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 play those two things, and I think you're you're convoluted or or suggesting that someone seeking justice, or someone who suggested that the police did something wrong, is the equivalent of of being biased, and so I don't think that's right. And so for that, um, and it sounds, it's nonsensical to exclude uh attorneys that ha- actually have experience working with uh or against police, against the Police Department, or trying to hold them accountable with the only system that's been out there, which is the court of law. And so now that we're presenting a new system, we would hopefully actually attract some of those folks that understand, have seeked justice and accountability, and another path to now find it, uh, working with the OAT and the Civilian Review Board.
Mayor, may I respond back?
Councilman DeCecio.
So, police officers on a daily basis seek justice, so I get that, okay? So, I then I also get the understanding that they want to be, you know, you want to preclude them because of that sense of internal bias. Likewise, not preventing individuals, and not, and not, you know, allowing individuals that come in with a perceived bias, have had court cases against the police, have had court cases against the city of Phoenix, we have a lot of attorneys out there, and they can come in with a fresh mind and a fresh look. This entity has a lot of power, it has investigative powers, it has the ability to go into something that we've never seen before. Likewise, the structure of how that is put together is critical. So if, you know, you've got to allow, you've got to put it in a position in there that if you want true unbiased, this is not for community, believe it or not, it's really for the entire city of Phoenix. So this involves a lot of people in there, not just a few people. So if you want to create a truly unbiased, you've got to make sure people come in without any preconceived notion. That's why you want, didn't want the police in there? I kind of agreed with that, I thought, okay, but at the same time, you've got to make sure that individuals that were involved in activism against police, um, they cannot be put on there either. You've got to have a truly unbiased entity. If you're, otherwise, you're going to have a strong bias in one direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Going back to earlier conversation, I do think we would like to see civilian oversight led by civilians, so that would certainly be my preference. I think bias is going to be inevitable. If you have human beings, they come with foibles, and so we won't ever have a perfect solution, but we're just going to try to do the best that we can and build a safe city for all of our residents and our officers.
Mayor.
Councilman.
That's why at the very begin, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor, that's why at the very beginning of any creation of any entity, any organization, you've got to make sure you create those firewalls in there. Everybody does that, that's why you've got to allow individuals that are on there, staffers to be on there, to, you know, not have that, those preconceived notions going, and if you don't put in those restrictions, you're opening a major door of a one-sided bias here, Mayor. Thank you.
Milton, would it be possible for you to compile some of the backgrounds of people who are holding similar offices? I think we've heard from someone who came from an insurance investigator background, um, another who who did come from a legal background, but it would, I think, be useful just to remind us of what are some of the different backgrounds that have worked in other cities?
Uh, Mayor, members of council, it it's been different kinds of backgrounds depending on the position that they've held. We've seen a number of cities whose director uh is an attorney. They've been in some form of legal practice or another. Uh, we've seen some people associated with investigative or civilian oversight entities that have had academic-related backgrounds. Um, there's really no set um industry, if you will, that produces people that do this, but what you want to have is a set of people collectively, uh, one that understands what the investigative process is and has some experience in it, but you will also, if your director is not an attorney, that's where the value of having the in-house attorney comes in, to make sure that statutory review is done properly, that a review of collective bargaining agreements of city ordinances is done properly, and if you're contemplating formulating policy or changes to training, uh, you want to have within the staff skillsets of people that would understand that. Uh, so it's not that you have to be an attorney to be the director, you could come from a different level, it it will just, it'll be interesting for us to see when we put it out on the street, what kind of people apply, and we'll we'll have to make a determination at that point, is the pool sufficient for us to get the right director? And as you'll hear the rest of the presentation, the rest of the staff staggers in after the director, the director is your first hire. Would you like for us to proceed with the rest of the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Staff could pull up the PowerPoint where we left off.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia has additional input.
Thank you, Mayor, and um I'm not going to continue to go back and forth with with Councilman DeCecio, I know his intent is probably to derail this, and and so I'll I'll stop there, and and I hope we can have level heads and make sure that who we hire is passionate about the issue and is the best person possible. But I did have some questions around, and Milton, we've talked about this before, about community input and process, of uh what kind of folks are we taking this to? Um, I know this is the the beginning of the ordinance, and we'll have other processes, but I did have uh both thoughts or suggestions that we should take this out to stakeholders and community folks, um, and also what do you think in regards to community being involved in this process of of finalizing the ordinance?
So, Mayor, Councilman Garcia, um, I probably can better address your question as we go through the rest of the presentation, because I've got a sketch of a sort of floating timeline that I'll be able to tie back to your question and and sentiment, and then we can see what your reaction is to it, if that's okay. So if we could put the PowerPoint back up, thank you. If you could advance the slide, because I'm still not getting. So transitioning from conversation, discussion about the draft ordinance, uh, moving forward, uh, one of the the other elements that is pertinent to this is staffing. So all of the OAT employees would be considered city employees, as was mentioned during the legal presentation, the OAT director would be appointed by the city manager, and the OAT staff would be hired in a staggered manner. And so what that refers to and why that's necessary, you need the director in order to have input into the skillsets of the investigators, and the director needs to be the one that hires the rest of the staff, because the staff will work for that person. So that's why your your staffing would stagger out over the rest of of a several-month period. We've already talked about the last item relative to connection to the Police Department, and so we then transition into what a potential uh quasi-public hiring process might be uh just for the director, not the rest of the staff. So we would propose to cast a wide net in order to build a pool of qualified applicants that we would advertise in a number of locations, uh, not all of them within the state of Arizona, uh, not all of them related to the legal profession, but simply to get the word out. Because this is an entity that today does not exist, and uh some people would not, it wouldn't even be on their radar screen to be looking to see if the job is open, we've got to be a little more aggressive to push it out. So our process would be, you have a pool of applicants. Was there a question?
Uh, yes, this is Councilman Noakowski, I was in that last slide, here's an organization called Los Abogados, Hispanic Latino Lawyers Association would be another good one to add on there.
Uh, thank you. So we would uh start as we typically would, you you have a posting for a number of days. Uh, because this is new, because we've never had a director before, we've never had an OAT office, uh, my suggestion is that the jobs stay on the street, so to speak, for several weeks in order to build an applicant pool. Uh, you would work through to narrow the pool to get to your semifinalists, these are people who are qualified, meaning they meet the qualifications as stipulated in the position description. They would go through in round one of the process, uh, multiple panels, which is our normal way. Um, some of those panels may have uh people from outside the government on, in some of those seats, and so that's one uh element of of community participation. You go to the second round, where the semifinalists have been sort of reduced or weeded out down to your finalists, and then they would come back for uh an additional interview panel uh that could be comprised of both uh city government uh people, uh, as well as some non-city government people, and then we would put the persons through what I'm simply referring to as normal HR activities. So that could mean they're asked to submit a writing sample, it could mean they're asked for a presentation, you would determine that when you get down to the pool itself. And then uh the other part of the round two process, I'm suggesting a virtual finalist community forum. So if you think back to when we hired Chief Williams, uh, because of COVID, we're not able to have town hall meetings or community forums where the chambers is packed with people, uh, that's too dangerous. So you could do a virtual forum and achieve the same outcome, where you have a moderator, uh, the moderator would ask each finalist to make a brief presentation of some sort, we would determine what that's about, and then the moderator would then be able to provide questions to the finalists based on community submittals. So you would be able to submit questions in advance, you'd be able to submit questions online in real time that evening, or you may be able to call in with a question. Uh, we would make it clear that not every question that's submitted will get asked, and uh when the ninety minutes is up, uh, then we would be able to close out that portion. What would happen next would be the typical deliberation period. The city manager's office would have to review everything that we've heard, everything that we've read, uh, we would typically be doing reference and I'm suggesting a virtual finalist community forum. So if you think back to when we hired Chief Williams, because of COVID, we're not able to have town hall meetings or community forums where the chambers is packed with people. That's too dangerous. So you could do a virtual forum and achieve the same outcome where you have a moderator. The moderator would ask each finalist to make a brief presentation of some sort. We would determine what that's about. And then the moderator would then be able to provide questions to the finalists based on community submittals. So you would be able to submit questions in advance. You'd be able to submit questions online in real time that evening, or you may be able to call in with a question. We would make it clear that not every question that's submitted will get asked. And when the 90 minutes is up, then we would be able to close out that portion. What would happen next would be the typical deliberation period. The city manager's office would have to review everything that we've heard, everything that we've read. We would typically be doing reference and background checks. That's a normal part of a city of Phoenix hire. And then an offer would be extended. Once that happens, this is an example of what we think the initial activities would be of the director. They would do the hiring of the additional staff people. They would need to get the office established. They would need to determine systems and procedures. And that would be done working or communicating with the police department, PSB, the chief's office. They would also need to receive a series of briefings and information on what the current policies and procedures are. Because of the way we're setting this up, the likelihood is greater that the person that gets hired would not have that much familiarity with internal procedures. They're not a city employee. They're certainly not connected to the police department. And so you'd need to give them some baseline of what happens right now in order for them to have a starting point. And then connecting with the community would be part of the initial activities of the director. So we would assume that that director would initially hire an executive assistant because they're going to need staff support. And the only way they would get it is through hiring a person. And so that, and perhaps the staff attorney, particularly if the director is not an attorney, would be the initial two hires we would assume that he or she would make. Then transitioning away from staffing, but focusing on office space because the OAT office has to be located somewhere. So several months ago, just like in our COVID-19 team, I have a team that's working with me on getting the OAT office off the ground. And so I gave a charge to look for office space that meets certain criteria. Easy access, connected to public transportation, something that's affordable, that can be handled within our appropriation, a place that's separate from City Hall and separate from the police headquarters, a place that has parking, somewhere that's reasonably close to the downtown core. And the reason that that's relevant is the investigative staff and the director will be going back and forth between their office and 620. Because if they're going to be involved in interviews and investigations, I asked the staff that looked at this, don't have them needing to drive 45 minutes to get downtown to do their job. They're going to lose a lot of time with that going back and forth. And also, if you could find a secure facility. So the proposed office space that we're presenting to you today is the Transit Building, 302 North First Avenue. It's the same structure where MAG is located. And so if you look at the picture on this slide, and you see the lights that are on, on the ground floor to the left of the main door, that is the office space that wraps all the way around the left side of the building if you were standing in front of it. That space used to be a bank, and right now it is vacant. It is city-owned. It has first-floor access. It is connected to public transportation. It is separate from City Hall and the police. It is a secure facility. It has both underground parking and a parking structure adjacent to it, which you can see in the picture that's on the slide. And so in terms of next steps, and this is where I'm going to come back to the question that you posed, Councilmember Garcia. So what we're doing now is essentially ordinance refinement. And so we're going to work back and forth in terms of your input, updating the ordinance, giving a second draft, and if necessary, a third, or fourth, or fifth, however you want us to go. That's going to take a while to work through. On the formal agenda for September the 16th, we have the OAT positions that will be there for your approval. That approval actually completes the process of legally creating positions that today do not exist. So the OAT staff positions, the initial ones, would come past you. And then we would want to begin the recruitment process for the director. That is likely to take three to four months, all the way until you actually have a person appointed by the city manager. But please note, the person cannot be hired before the ordinance is passed and the relevancy of that. So think of the situation that we have. You've got a department that doesn't exist. There's no procedures, no processes. You've got a staff that, there's nothing there. And so if I'm already on another job and I'm applying for this job, until you have an ordinance, I could quit my job and then something happens and now I'm stuck. So from an HR position, that's a problem. We're projecting that the ordinance would pass sometime during the fall of 2020. So how long, it just depends. While that is being worked on, we would propose to move forward with the office. And so we've got to negotiate a lease. Even though the Transit Building is owned by the city, the rent would not be free. And then you'd also have to do a build-out of the space, have an architect to lay out what the offices might look like. And so that's going on simultaneously while we're still working on the hiring process. And so if, in fact, the ordinance is passed sometime this fall, we would project that the director would be hired sometime in January 2021. The other factor that's not on the screen, but that does relate to our ability to get this done, it gets extremely difficult to run recruiting processes between Christmas and Thanksgiving. So whether you follow those holidays or not, it does impact people paying attention that your job's even out there. And so I just mentioned that. So with that, we can circle back and have more discussion if you'd like.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I was waiting to see if I wasn't first this time. One of the, had a couple of community meetings. And one of the things that folks really liked from the chief process, and I don't quite remember this, I wasn't around, but they mentioned survey questions, that there was somehow a community survey or a survey for the qualities that we were looking for in a chief that was then used. And so that's one suggestion that was brought up. Other couple of questions I had was, one, who picks the panelists in the different processes? Is it, is it the city manager? Is it the mayor? Would want to know who picks the panelists? Is it us? And then the last question to Milton, meant to ask this earlier, community folks had some concerns about the idea, or there's the idea that police has been helping us shape this ordinance. And so just wanted to clarify if there's been contact with police, the chief or otherwise, to try to shape the ordinance. Again, in the tend to be clear that we're, to the community that we're wanting to create a process that's fair to everyone, I wanted to ask that question. And if it is the case that police has been working or taken into account in the creation of this ordinance, is, this is the equivalent time or a creation of a stakeholder group that can counter that, that I would ask for. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So I had not contemplated doing a community survey for the qualities to be contained within the OAT director. Yes, we did do that when the chief was hired. It's a little different kind of situation. I'm not saying it can't happen. It's, we're, we're going to need to exert an effort to find a pool of people who are actually qualified and willing to take the director's job, especially being brand-new. You know, I'm coming to an office that doesn't exist, so I've got to go from scratch and do everything. Not everybody will want to do that. When we did the chief's process, I believe we had something like 80 applicants. I'd be stunned, not that it couldn't happen, I'd be stunned to have 80 people lining up for this job. This is a specialized field, a specialized type of work. We will take that under advisement and swing back to you. In terms of the hiring process, the hiring process is part of what the city manager's office does. So it's a city manager hire. So in consultation with HR, we would determine the panel size, the logistics, who's on the panel. That would be a normal part of a city manager hiring process that we do now. And Councilman Garcia, I want to answer your last question directly. And you've known me to be a straight-up guy, so I want to be straight in answering your question. No, the police department has played no role in shaping the ordinance. This is an area that I have experience in. I didn't need to ask the police department for anything. And I did not ask them for anything. I did research with the staff and worked with Julie, advising her on what to put in the ordinance in order to do a two-step process with you to try to capture what you all had passed and give it to you in a way that made sense with room for adjustments. And so, no, they have played zero role in the ordinance that you see before you. It's Julie, Cree, and me. That's it.
Thank you, Milton. Appreciate for the straight answer. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the hiring. Staff, it really is, in the charter, it's up to the city manager to hire people, correct? We're really not supposed to get involved in it?
That's correct.
So if you put a group of people together, we, we need to be cautious in commenting on who you're asking to be a part of the interview panel. Is that correct? I don't want to get any of us in trouble, or the process in trouble.
Well, I'll, the answer is yes, but I'll ask the law department to go ahead and give the legal answer.
Yes, Mayor and Council.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, just I ask because I want to make sure that we respect the process and we don't, we don't trip it up somehow.
Right. You are correct. Because of the city charter, the, that is under the purview of the city manager. So council needs to be careful in providing direction that might influence the process. Or, for instance, we wouldn't want council to be picking people to, to put on the panel that might influence the process.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. I just want to offer a word of caution. If we're going to have a panel or you're going to do any type of survey, be very careful because I have had many residents ask me how to get this on the ballot and to stop this process. So I would be very cautious if I were going forward on how you proceed. Thank you.
The, I'm sorry, the other part of the questions that Councilmember Garcia asked about that I did not address was the, were we contemplating taking the draft out to community groups? We were not contemplating that. We were contemplating providing the draft ordinance to members of council for your feedback. It's not that taking it out, you know, was, you know, there's some issue with it, but that's not something we had planned to do. I would simply remind you that to do that simply extends the process. And extending the process means it pushes the hire of the director further and further out. That might be an okay thing, but I'm simply pointing out, the longer it takes to get an ordinance, the longer it will take to get a director.
Any final council member comments? Any closing comments from our staff?
Mayor, members of council, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present our work thus far. As I indicated previously, we will take the language and section comments that we received and work those through and put out a second draft ordinance to you. I don't want to say right this minute exactly what day that will come to you, but we'll get it done as soon as we can and get it back out. And then would look forward to engaging you further in a subsequent meeting at whatever point that's set.
Wonderful. Thank you, Milton. My sense from today's meeting is that we are close enough that we do not need another work study, but welcome feedback from my colleagues. So the next step then could be either a policy or a formal moving forward. If it works, I think I will let staff circulate a draft and then get feedback from the council. And we will see how many different points of divergence we have to try to get a step forward. Thank you to Milton for, and Julie for all your work on this. And thank you to the council as well for continuing to engage. With that, we are adjourned.